Now, we have a presentation. It's some Will staff. And this presentation is not intended to be a deep dive on any of these issues, but we want to provide you with some resources. And, you know, Will, for example, is a public resource for you all. If you have follow-up questions or if there are other resources we can create to be helpful. And I know there are some attorneys in this room beyond Will, so maybe you'll have a general understanding. So for my part of the presentation, I am going to be talking about powers and duties of Wisconsin school boards. Perhaps this isn't the most exciting topic, but I think it's very foundational, very critical to know what is the source of your authority and how broad is it? So, congratulations and thank you. Many of you are newly elected. Many of you have served for several years. Perhaps your experience has been that you don't receive a lot of thanks or gratitude for the role that you do, which is kind of like running a mini-government. But likely, you'll face a lot of scrutiny in this role, perhaps criticism from your constituents or even colleagues. And there's going to be a lot of issues that you'll have to learn about that might be brand-new to you. So, why? Why do you do it? Why do you choose to do it? Well, for good reason. And I think there's a couple examples here. First, children. Second, as Melvin was talking about parental rights. Third, a lot of taxpayer funds are being used. And then, fourth, related to that, schools are one of the biggest, if not sometimes the biggest employer in a local community. So now, you're on the school board. Now what? Has anyone heard anything along these lines? Your job is basically to approve the budget. Just pass the policies that your superintendent gives you, that WASB gives you, that your legal counsel gives you. Just pass those. You're not an expert in education. You should leave the substantive stuff to the experts, to the professionals. And then last, if you do or don't do X, you're going to be sued. You actually have more authority than perhaps many of you know. And I'm going to start with our state constitution here. It states, if you can't read it, "The supervision of public instruction shall be vested in a state superintendent," right now Superintendent Jill Underly, "and such other officers as the legislature shall direct, and their qualifications, powers, duties, and compensation shall be prescribed by law." Okay, so that's the next section. What did the legislature direct? What is the law? Well, I think these two sections of our state law are probably the most relevant. Section 12012 is related to school board duties. And you can see here, "The school board of a Common or Union High School District shall," so you must. And there are many listed out, which I will get to. And then 12013, "School Board Powers." And this essentially says, "The school board may do all things reasonable to promote the cause of education, including establishing, providing, and improving school district programs, functions, and activities for the benefit of students, including..." And then we'll get to some of those specifics as well. This one's also really important. Section 118.001. And really, what is important to know about this? It states that "the statutory duties and powers of school boards shall be broadly construed to authorize any school board action that is within the comprehensive meaning and the terms of the duties and powers, if the action is not prohibited by the state, the laws of the federal government, or Wisconsin." So, all of this together essentially means that a school board has the power to do all things reasonable to promote the cause of education and duty to care for, control, and manage the property and the affairs of the school district. Courts are required to broadly construe these powers that are already pretty broad, and duties, to authorize any school board action that is within the meaning of the duties and powers, as long as it doesn't violate state or federal laws or constitutions. So, what should you take away from this? Essentially, state law defines your authority quite broadly. Now, I just want to go through a few of the specific duties and powers. We certainly do not have time to go through them all. My first version of this listed every one. And first of all, you wouldn't have been able to see it. And second of all, I think it would have been pretty boring hearing me read all of these things. But I just want to go through a few that are either really important or maybe a little bit interesting. So, school board duties. School boards have the possession, care, control, and management of the property and affairs of the school district. This one, I think, is really interesting as well. School boards are required to visit and examine the schools in the district, advise teachers and administrative staff regarding the instruction, government, and progress of the students, and exercise supervision over the schools. So, I'm going to make a plug here. I hope you all can stay for the whole day because we actually, on our last panel, Connecting Policy to Practice, have two teachers that are going to join us. And this is one of the topics we plan to talk about. Okay, you're supposed to go visit schools. What are you looking for? You know, if a lot of you aren't teachers or don't have a teaching background, what are some key things that you can keep an eye out for when you're in the classroom? Another one. School boards declare the educational standards for the district. This is one that Will has a model policy on. And we think it is so important, and arguably so basic, just to have student academic achievement and these standards kind of be at the center of what you do. And just real quickly, what's in here? Our state law requires school boards annually, before the school year, to notify parents of the academic standards that will be in effect for the year. And this is also required to be an item on the agenda of the first school board meeting of the year. Now, I want to move on to school board powers. So, in addition to doing all things reasonable to promote the cause of education in a district, you also have broad powers. For example, boards are empowered to make rules, manage finances, hire legal representation, and a lot more. Later this morning, Dr. Marguerite Rosa is going to be joining us via Zoom for a session on school finance in particular. Now, a few examples here. This is kind of related to the rulemaking authority. Section 12013 Sub 1 Sub A indicates that school boards can make rules for the district, for the organization, gradation, and government of the schools of the district. And in addition to doing that, the school district administrator, or any principal or teacher designated by the administrator, may make rules with the consent of the school board. So again, you can delegate your authority, but really, it always comes back to the school Another power. School boards have authority to retain an attorney or attorneys to represent the board or district in any action or proceeding brought for or against the board or district, and provide for any other legal service for the welfare of the district. Now, some of you might be thinking, "How are we to accomplish all of these duties and exercise all of these powers?" And kind of what I just hinted to is that a lot of this can be delegated. Authority and responsibility can be delegated to administrators. Which brings me to the role of the school district administrator. And I believe we have some in the room here with us today. This brings us to section 11824. And again, I'm going to give a preview for later on today. We have a session specifically on board and superintendent communications. It'll include current board members, current and former superintendents, and an attorney to go through... Maybe your board and superintendent don't agree on everything. How can you still be effective? What have they done that has created a positive impact? Now, under this law, it permits school boards to employ a district administrator. The district administrator, quote, "shall have general supervision and management of the professional work of the schools and the promotion of students." In addition, the district administrator makes recommendations to the board and executes the directives of the board. Now, while the duties and powers, as I've kind of stressed here, lie with you as the board, the public school system is set up to be implemented by a variety of staff that are... You're going to be held accountable for. So making decisions about the superintendent, CFO for the district, these are critical decisions about who's ultimately going to help you execute your powers and your duties and have a well-run district. You know, a lot of our model policies are about how the district is run, good governance. Because if you don't have that, no matter how good the rest of the policies are, there's always going to be problems. So, before my part of the presentation concludes, I just want to mention here that school boards should be aware, as government bodies, they're bound by the federal and state constitutions. They may never unlawfully infringe upon the fundamental rights of students, parents, or teachers. Right after lunch, we're going to have a session specific to parental rights in schools that will dive more in detail into that vital role of parental involvement. So, I'll conclude my aspect and just say that ultimately, we think the best way to make positive change at the local level is to be educated and empowered. So for the rest of the day, our presentations will seek to provide that new information and give you something that you can actually take back to your local communities. So I'm going to turn it over now to my colleague, Will Flanders. Will Flanders is the research director at Will. He has authored reports on topics like the effects of Act 10 on the teaching workforce, the economic benefits of the Milwaukee Parental Choice Program, and many more. He is our expert when it comes to anything data-related. So he's going to join us now and provide information about how you can access data about your district.
Thank you very much, Corey. Thanks to everyone for being here. We strategically put this presentation at the beginning of the day before everyone's eyes glaze over after lunch. We'll move on to more exciting topics as the day goes on. But we'll talk about some data here for a few minutes. So, I think, you know, one thing that's important to note is that, you know, there's a lot of data out there about schools in Wisconsin. And this is why this session can't have quotes attributed to people, because I'm actually going to say something positive about DPI. But DPI does make a good amount of data available, you know, compared to some other states that are out there. I will say there's a good amount of data available about Wisconsin schools, but it can be a little bit overwhelming. It can be difficult to access. You know, Wisconsin schools have data on things like proficiency, graduation rate, a good amount of demographic data is out there as well. But again, this data can be a bit challenging to find and a bit difficult to understand at times. Just pointing on the right-hand side of the screen, for those of you in the audience there, one of the major resources is Wise Dash. Are you guys familiar with Wise Dash? I know you have to submit things to Wise Dash, so you're familiar, at least in that regard. But that's probably the main public-facing source of data about Wisconsin schools that's made available, available at DPI. There's a lot of different things that are there, but again, you have to sort of know where to look. Things that you might not think would be in a certain category or placed in a certain category. So, for example, if you want to see data on enrollment, you have to look under the ESSA tab. And maybe that's not where folks would first think to look for data like that. So I think a way to start here with this brief presentation is just to go over a couple key terms. And a lot of you guys may be familiar with this, but again, we're trying to sort of gear this to everyone in the audience. There are two key things that sort of determine how a school is evaluated in Wisconsin. And those are the school's proficiency and the school's growth. There are other factors that matter as well. There's graduation data that's included in the report card and things of that nature. But proficiency is simply the raw student score on a particular test. So in Wisconsin, the main source of that data, of course, is the forward exam. And we're sort of looking at where students fall on the forward exam, and then there's a cut point score, right? We're saying, is a student meeting expectations, or is a student falling below that threshold of meeting expectations? The second key component is growth. And growth examines the change that a student in... Or the growth of a student from year to year. How much they improve or don't improve from one year to the next on that exam. I just put something that's from Wise Dash at the bottom here. This is for one of the districts in the state. I don't remember which one I pulled, but you can just see sort of the breakdown of student proficiency in this district. About 18% of students in the advanced category, 54% in the proficient category, and then the below basic and basic is a smaller percentage. So relative to a lot of the state, this district is actually doing pretty well. You know, what we've seen post-COVID in Wisconsin is a lot of districts are struggling with proficiency. And while we often point to districts like Beloit or Milwaukee where proficiency rates are under 20%, you know, what is a good district in Wisconsin? Well, it's a district where proficiency might be 40 or 50%. And of course, as you guys know, that means that we're essentially not reaching levels of proficiency that we'd like to see for almost half our kids. And that's problematic. So just looking at the Wise Dash website as a resource, this is the first resource that we'll discuss here today. I do recommend, you know, folks take some time to get familiar with it. And I'm happy to, you know, discuss with anyone that wants to learn how to navigate this website a little bit better. But you can find a good amount of data for every district in the state. It's laid out in a relatively easy-to-understand format, which is a nice aspect of it. Again, we have the proficiency data here. And a lot of the other data is laid out in a similar fashion. You'll see enrollment. You can also look at enrollment trends. You can look at some suspension data and things like that. Again, you have to know which sort of table to access, but the data is there in a lot of different forms and a lot of different ways. Some of the downsides of Wise Dash as a resource, it doesn't provide much context for the data. So, again, you may see that your district's proficiency is 45% in English language arts, but you have to look more broadly to know how that compares to the state as a whole. Again, if you see that, you might think, "Well, our district's not performing that well." But if you look across the state, you know, that actually is a relatively good performance, whether it should be considered that or not. You also can't compare districts across multiple dimensions. We'll talk about with the report card briefly here in a moment, how that can sort of provide additional nuance and additional context for better or worse. So for example, we can't look at, well, you know, "How are students performing in the low-income category relative to other districts in the state?" There are some additional breakdowns you can do there, but not, again, making those sorts of comparisons. And then some data points are missing. You can only go back, I believe, to 2014-15 on this resource, whereas you can go to, you know, there's much older data that's out there for Wisconsin schools, going back to 2000 at least for a lot of different resources. Also, you can't access the report card data fully through this resource. The next state resource that, again, a lot of folks, I'm sure, are familiar with, is the Wisconsin State Report Card. The report card, what most people look at is the overall score. You know, you see a number there that's, for this district, is 67%. And that puts the district into a three-star district, a meets expectations district. What we see in Wisconsin is that there's not a lot of variation. We see a lot of districts in this three-star category. Even districts like Milwaukee reach this three-star category. So, we'll talk in a moment about how that happens and why that might be the case. But it does provide a nice, neat sort of overall assessment of where each school in the district stands and where the district stands. And you can just sort of Google Wisconsin report cards and pull those for your district. And I'm sure you guys see those in other contexts as well. It also gives you, you know, subgroup results. So each district has focal groups that they're supposed to focus on improving performance for, to improve their overall score on the report card. And that's something you can also get from the report card data. So, report cards are less useful in one context. And if there's one thing we've hammered, like on, you know, radio interviews and reports over the years, it's that we sort of have this Lake Wobegon effect with our report cards in the state. And the reason that that exists is we go back to the growth versus proficiency definitions that we had up there earlier. Report cards aren't comparable between districts. If you look at a report card for Cudahy and a report card for Waukesha County School District, three stars doesn't mean the same thing in each of those districts. And in one sense, that's good. In one sense, that's sort of recognizing that differences in poverty affect student performance. But it also means that for parents or for school board members that want to see on an even scale how school districts are performing, there's no direct comparison that's possible from the report cards. And the reason for that is that we weigh growth differently in schools with more low-income students. In schools with more students from low-income backgrounds, growth plays a heavier role in your report card score than in districts with fewer low-income students. In a district with over 50% low-income kids, growth is about 95% of that component of your report card score. And if you go to the other end of the spectrum in districts without many low-income kids, it's almost... It's equally purely based on proficiency, about 95% based on proficiency. And so that's how a district like Milwaukee can be three stars. It's how a district like Beloit can be two stars. But it's not just those districts that sort of performance gaps and issues are masked by the report card system that we have in Wisconsin. On our policy side, we've obviously advocated for change. We'll continue to do so in the future. But with the current state of the report cards, these issues do exist. The last resource I'll mention, I have a shameless plug, or maybe we'll say, "This is the best resource that's out there," which is Will's School Score Card. You can access this on our website. We've been putting this together. Noah does a lot of the work on this with our tableaus and stuff, one of our staff folks who's here today. But what we try to do is put as much data as we can into one stop shop. So you don't have to go searching, you know, for a lot of different places for the current school data. We have things like proficiency. We have enrollment trends over time. We have spending per student in the upper left there. And then we have some data along the top row that sort of looks at just individual facts about it in a number of different categories. So while we don't have everything, you know, while there's data out there that's not covered by this resource, we think it can be a good starting spot. And then you can move on to some of the deeper dives with the DPI resources that are out there. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lucas Weber. He's one of our deputy counsel at Will, and he's going to discuss some of our public records rules. I didn't bring my biography of Lucas up here, so he can fill you in on his background himself.
My biography's in your little booklet thing. So, I'm an attorney. I work at Will. I litigate typically in the areas of separation of powers, but also do a lot of open government work, transparency work. So usually, when I'm giving this presentation, it's to groups of everyday citizens. And I'm trying to explain to them how to hold government accountable and how to do everything possible to preserve their rights, so that if they needed to, they can go to court and sue someone. So today's presentation is the opposite. I hope to give a 10,000-foot overview and just explain, you know, the basics of these laws and how to set yourself up in the best position to not get sued. So, a little quick introduction to open government. So there's the letter of the law, and there's the spirit of the law. Both mandate that government bodies in Wisconsin operate in an open and transparent manner. So the work you're doing is the public's work. Being open to the public to the greatest extent possible is what the law requires. School boards, of course, are government bodies. School board members must abide by Wisconsin's open government laws, namely the public records laws and the open meetings laws. So failure to follow these laws can land you in court. You'd be explaining to a judge your actions. The goal today is to tell you a little bit about what those laws are and how you can best avoid that outcome. So we'll start with open meetings. So what types of gatherings are subject to open meetings laws? So any government body that's created by law in the state of Wisconsin which convenes, and I'll talk about that in a second, but for the purpose of conducting governmental business with which it is charged, which is an important qualifier, in a number sufficient to make a decision, must comply with the open meetings law. So typically, that's a majority of members of a government body would have a quorum, because it takes a majority to act. But it doesn't necessarily have to be. So sometimes a school board can act only with a supermajority. And in that case, if you have what's called a negative quorum, that could be a quorum that has to be open meetings noticeable. Okay? So by that, I mean if you have a nine-member board and you require 2/3 votes to do something, and you have four members, you're not a majority of the board, but you have four members who are present, you can block that action. If you talk about blocking that action, that is an open meetings violation. You would have to notice that meeting before you do it, okay? The most frequent open meetings issues that we see are failure to give adequate notice of meetings or topics to be discussed in a closed session. I'll talk about that in a little bit. Misuse or abuse of a closed session. And then failure to make a meeting reasonably accessible to all. So I'll start, it's perhaps easiest just to talk about some examples of open meetings laws. So these are three examples that are violations. These would violate state law. So if five of seven school board members get together at somebody's house or a bar, and they debate a resolution that's going to be on that month's agenda, obviously, that's a plain violation of the open meetings law. You've got a majority there, you're talking about official government business, that's a violation. If three officials on a six-person school board exchange emails agreeing to table a resolution regarding a policy that requires a supermajority to go forward, that also is a violation. So your quorum could be an electronic quorum. If you are emailing each other, or you have a group text and you're texting each other, that itself could be a public meeting that you are conducting, because you're conducting official government business. It could be over the phone. It could be... Doesn't necessarily just have to be in person. For this reason, a lot of school boards that I've seen typically have a policy that says if you're going to send something out to the school board, you either blind copy everybody so that they can't reply all, or you include a disclaimer on the email that says, "Do not reply all to this email. This is just being provided for you for information." And then the last example is five members of a nine-member school board attend a conference, like today, and talk to each other about what policies the board should adopt. I don't know if there are any school boards here that have a majority of their members present today. If that's the case, of course, you cannot talk to the other school board members who are on your board about any policies that your board might adopt or any official action that your board might take. That's important. That itself could be an open meetings violation. Some things, though, that are not open meetings violation. Two of three school board members meet up at a bar to watch the Packer game. You know, that's a majority of the board, but they're not meeting to talk about government business. That's totally fine. You're allowed to do that. You are absolutely allowed to have a personal life and hang out with your friends, and your friends can be school board members, as long as you're not talking about official school board business. Administrative staff meetings within divisions or units of a school district are not public meetings. Public officials discussing an issue over which they have no authority. Like if school board members, before a meeting, for example, get together and they're talking about a proposal by the city to rezone a property, as long as it's not related to school board property or in any way related to the school board, that itself is not a violation. And then, of course, single public individuals, like the police chief, the mayor, a superintendent by themselves, cannot commit an open meetings violation, because if you're not required to meet with people to take action, you can't be required to notice all your meetings. And school boards failing to allow time for public comment is not a public... An open meetings violation. Get this question all the time. People will call and say, "I wasn't allowed to speak at my school board meeting. I want to sue my school board." And I always tell them, "They are not required to let you speak. You do not have to allow the public to participate. If you choose to allow the public to participate, you can have to do so in a non-discriminatory manner. You can't discriminate on members of the public based on the message that they're saying, but the mere not allowing public comment at a meeting is itself not an open meetings violation." So notice requirements. Usually, open meetings notices are prepared by staff and sent out to the board members ahead of time. I always recommend to review those for sufficiency, because it's the board members themselves who are in the meeting who are going to be liable if that open meetings notice is not sufficient. Generally, 24 hours' notice is what's required, unless there are special circumstances. You know, generally, for like a city council, I use the example of a major fire or a natural disaster. We're not going to require 24 hours' notice for the board to get together to make emergency decisions. School boards probably have less emergency decisions like that that have to be made, but it could happen sometimes. So less than 24 hours is allowed if there are special circumstances that don't make 24-hour notice possible. The best practice, of course, is to provide the public with as much notice as you possibly can, post it in as many places as possible, post it on your website. And the notices themselves have to be sufficient to put the public on notice as to what will be discussed. So anything you want to bring up at that meeting has to be on that notice. If it's new business that you didn't notice, you can't discuss it at that meeting. It has to be re-noticed for a different meeting. And closed session. So to hold a closed session, which is not open to the public, there are special procedures that the board has to go through. They have to provide notice. They have to cite the appropriate statutes and relate the information that you're going to be talking about to those particular statutes. And then it cannot come back into closed session unless the intent to do so was also previously noticed. So when you're going to go into a closed session, you have to say, "Hey, I'm going into closed session pursuant to this statute to discuss ongoing litigation related to X, Y, and Z." You have to provide enough information so that the public can understand whether or not you're appropriately applying that closed meeting reason that you can go do, okay? Reasons for closed sessions can include litigation or legal advice from an attorney. Obviously, we... I think everybody agrees that makes sense. You have to be able to have a legal defense if the board is involved in litigation. Personnel matters, if you're talking about whether who you're going to promote or disciplinary stuff. And then some bidding discussions, if you're talking about school board official bidding business. But a government body may not close a session just to keep debate among members on a controversial subject out of the public eye, or to prevent a member of the public from recording the meeting. So members of the public are allowed to record school board meetings. There are open meetings. People are... They have a right to record those meetings if they want to. You can't go into closed session just to throw the public out so that they can't record you. And then you also can't... And then you also can't go into closed session just to hide how a body or a member of a body would vote on an issue. So that's kind of the 10,000-foot overview of open meetings laws. Every school board will have an attorney, and that attorney represents the school board. Strongly encourage you to get to know that attorney very well. They represent the school board, not you personally, but they represent the school board. And so it's important to talk to the attorney about the scope of that representation and the advice that they're giving you. But they should be your best friend. Litigation. So if you ever find yourself on the wrong end of open meetings litigation, the process is a little weird, a little different than a normal lawsuit. So anybody who thinks you broke the law, and the step they have to take first is they have to notify the district attorney or the attorney general. So they have to file a complaint with the district attorney or the attorney general, and they have to give them 20 days. The district attorney or the attorney general have 20 days to take action on their own. That is, they could bring the charge against you or the government board. After that 20-day window has expired, then the individual can bring that action on behalf of the state against the board or whoever was violating the law. There is a two-year statute of limitations on this, so any alleged violation of open meetings laws can only go back two years. And the remedies are a little different. There are fees. Attorney fees can be paid. So attorneys like bringing these cases because they can get their fees paid by the government body if they're successful. There are also forfeitures that could be issued against school board members, against any public body who's found to have violated the law. I will say that's rare, but it is possible. There are no damages available to anybody who's suing under this. It's considered a public wrong. It's not considered a personal harm, so you can't actually get damages when you bring these types of lawsuits. Next, we'll talk about public records. So kind of the other half of the government transparency law. Who is covered? State and local governments, including school board members, school staff, everybody who works for the district, are all covered by the public records laws. What is covered? Everything. Paper records, electronic records, handwritten records, anything that you would have that's related to your job would be a public record. Categories would be things like policies, emails, text messages. It does not matter if you do that on your personal phone, or your work phone, or your personal email, or your work email. If you are conducting government business on a device, that government business is what the public record is. It doesn't matter what the account, if you're using your Gmail account or your personal cellphone, they still have to be turned over. So what's not included? Personal drafts. So if you're working on an op-ed, or you're working on a draft policy or something, those drafts are not public records. They do not have to be turned over. And personal communications, which are unrelated to government business. If you are emailing your spouse about a medical issue, or emailing a friend about plans for the weekend or something, those are purely personal records, not related to your government business. Those don't have to be turned over. There are also various exemptions in the statutes and from case law that we'll talk about. So what is a request? There are no magic words needed to make a public records request. Doesn't have to be made in writing. Doesn't have to be made on a particular form. Basically, it's if you receive a request for records, that is a sufficient public records request that you can identify what the records are, that is a valid request that you would have to respond to. You are, as school board members, likely the custodian of all your records. Districts may have different public records policies as to who the record custodian is. So again, you want to consult with the board's attorney or legal counsel whenever you're responding, whenever you get one of these requests. You want to consult with an attorney and just make sure you're complying with the law. Generally, record custodians have to respond what is called "as soon as practicable and without delay." There's no timeline in the state public records law as to when a public records request has to be responded to. All it says is "as soon as practicable and without delay." The attorney general has always opined that that means about two weeks' time for a relatively simple request. But if it's a huge request, or you have to search a lot of email accounts, and there's a lot of terms you've got to search for, it could take significantly longer than that. And of course, you can charge for the cost to locate those records. It has to be the staff member who is the lowest-cost staff member who's capable of conducting the search can conduct that search, and that's what you can charge the public for those. If that cost is anticipated to be more than $50, you can request prepayment of those fees before you engage in that search. So options to respond when you get a public records request, assuming that it's a valid public records request, what are your options? You can turn over all the records that are requested. You can produce all the records but make redactions to those records. You can produce some records and withhold others, or you could withhold all records. In everyone but the first situation producing everything, a written explanation of the redaction or denial is required. And that's something that if you're going to be denying or redacting, you're going to want to work with legal counsel to make sure that you do that correctly. What records are exempt? So again, I sound like a broken record, but always consult with your attorney. There are really good attorneys in the state who probably work at all of your school boards who do this stuff every day, and they know what they're talking about, and they should be consulted and trusted. Statutory exemptions from public records, as I said, things like purely personal records, copyrighted or patented information, so like newspapers, you don't have to turn over books, you don't have to turn over because you can't make copies of them anyways. That would be unlawful. Published material that's for sale, you don't have to turn over. Drafts, as I said, and then healthcare, and most relevant here, certain student records you cannot turn over. And again, everything I'm talking about today is just under state law. There are also federal law, obviously, requirements there that you're going to want to talk with your counsel about as well. Whenever you get a public records request, public authorities have to engage in what's called "the balancing test." So the question before the public records authority is the interest in the public's right to know that information outweighed by any harm by disclosing that information. It's a balancing test. You've got to balance both of those interests. If the balancing test comes out as the public's interest in weighing in the favor of the public's interest, it gets turned over. If not, it doesn't get turned over. That balancing test is something that can be litigated, and I will get to that in a second. Under the public policy balancing tests, certain things are usually just exempt. So certain law enforcement records, for example, are exempt under that. Names of minors are considered exempt under that, under the case law. Litigation on public records requests is a little bit different than open meetings laws because it's considered a personal harm. If you request records and they are not provided to you, you have been harmed, and you have a right to sue immediately when that harm occurs. Now, at what point that actually is, is up in the air. But if public records holders don't turn over all records, or they don't respond in a timely manner, a lawsuit could be brought. The type of lawsuit that gets brought is called a writ of mandamus. It's one of the common law writs. A writ of mandamus compels government officials to take the actions that state law requires them to do. So that's why it's the only way you can bring on these is to file a writ of mandamus. What you do is you petition the court for a writ. The court would sign the writ. The writ would command a public official to do something that state law tasks that public official to do. In this case, turn over public records. In these cases, state law, not FOIA, governs. So we're talking about state public records requests. FOIA is the federal law version of public records that applies to federal officials, not state officials. Damages are available here, including punitive damages. And there is a fee shift, although due to some recent litigation, the fee shift itself is not what it used to be. So just closing with some practical tips here. I always tell everybody, any public official, assume anything that you send, whether an email, or text message, or whatever you write down. Could be printed on the front page of the newspaper. If you don't want your mother reading it, don't put it in writing. The board's attorney should be consulted regularly. Again, they represent the board, not you personally, but they do represent you in your capacity as a board member on the board and as you relate to the board. So you want to talk with that attorney about what the scope of their representation is. But keep them close and keep them in the loop. Use closed sessions sparingly, only if there's a true need under the statutes. I think there's kind of a knee-jerk in some cases to use closed sessions more often than necessary. When you receive a record request, do your best to respond and acknowledge it in a timely manner. A lot of what we see are just people who are frustrated that they didn't at least get an email back saying, "Hey, I got your request. I'm working on it. You know, it might take me a couple months to get this to you." But as long as you are being reasonable in telling them, it makes litigation very unlikely. And if you get a really big record request, you can always contact the record requester and say, "Hey, this is huge. You're requesting a lot of stuff. Is there any way we can narrow this down? Or you can help me? Tell me what you want me to search for?" Work with the record-requestor, and it's totally fine to talk with them and see if they want to either narrow it or exactly what they're looking for, any way that can make your life and their life easier, right? So if you're producing all these records, they probably don't want everything that they might otherwise get. So it's okay to kind of work together and fulfill that, and I always recommend that as well. So that is the end of the open government presentation. Our next presenter today is Kyle Kanan. Kyle is our policy director. He's got a wealth of experience working in the state capitol in Madison. He is our head lobbyist here at Will, and he's going to talk a little bit about tackling state legislative actions and just how to pay attention to all that stuff. So thank you, Kyle.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Kyle Kanan, and I am the policy director at Will. And the focus of my presentation, it'll be kind of a quick-hit one. As school board members, there's a lot of education policies obviously made at the state level. And my goal in this is kind of giving you a roadmap on how to keep track of what's going on in Madison. So I see we have Representative Witke here, so thank you for coming. I'm sure he'll have some good tips, too, if you want to talk to him after. So I guess we can start with the why. So you are the people that are on the ground. You can be a trusted resource to your lawmakers. So I think it's important to develop a relationship with your lawmakers because they will come to you and ask for advice on things. I think one of the main things that you've got to remember about lawmakers, they are digesting a lot of information on a lot of different topics, and they usually specialize in one or two issues. Not all of them specialize in education. I think Representative Witke is probably one of the examples of someone who does, but not everyone does. So I think you can be a trusted resource in giving them the information they need to know about what's going on in the ground. And because of your expertise, you can help influence policymaking at the state level as well. I think it's also important for lawmakers to know kind of the unique aspects of every single district out there. There are different challenges for every district, not having kind of all the same issues. It's important for you guys to kind of communicate the issues that are most important to your district because it might be different than the district next door. And I think it also helps probably manage expectations when state budget time comes around, right? There's a lot of things that lawmakers, especially on the finance committee, have to consider when the state budget comes around. Knowing how they're thinking about all these competing priorities and where K-12 education kind of lies in those priorities, I think will help you better understand where they're coming from, whether you like their decision or not. All right. So my goal is I wanted to kind of walk through the state legislature's notification service and how you can sign up for notifications to know about pending legislation in the legislature. So I'm just going to kind of do a step-by-step, and we'll do it in a couple different methods. And at the end of the presentation, we'll kind of highlight some of the other things you can track as well. So when you go to the legislature's website, which is legis.wi.gov, you would go right to this button here where it says "notification service." Once you click on that, that'll take you to a page where you'd want to create an account. And this list here kind of lists all the different ways that you can track proposals within the legislature. So I'll walk through a couple of these keywords. So you can search things that are related to education, and you'll get notifications, anything, something like that pops up. You can also track specific bills. So if you know about a bill that's out there, and you want to keep track of that bill, you sign up for notifications to that. And I should preface all this. When you sign up for notifications, they will send you emails letting you know when there's action taken on the bill, if there's a committee hearing scheduled, if it's referred to a new committee, if it passes the House. It'll kind of keep you updated along every step of the way. You can also sign up for committee notices. So if you want to track all actions of the Assembly Education Committee, you can sign up for notifications, and you'll get tips from that. And then if you have a legislator or lawmaker that you want to follow everything that they do, you can sign up for notifications for every bill that they introduce. So we'll go through kind of a step-by-step. So obviously, log in or create an account. So this is the keyword search, and I just did a couple different kind of education-related keywords that you can search for here. So we do, you've got curriculum, school evaluation and testing, truancy. When you go into that keyword search up top, it'll kind of populate topics that the legislature tracks. So truancy is one of them. When I put that in, it was something that they track. If you put something pretty kind of detailed, it may not come up, but it'll also give you examples on the right column here of different things that might relate to the topic you're following, and allow you to kind of go check those and follow those as well. So we'll do one example here. We'll do truancy as an example. So when you go to current matches, after you click, it'll bring up all the bill proposals that are related to truancy. You can go click on each one of those and kind of see what they all are, and then track those individual bills as well. But we'll kind of go through how you can kind of see what the bill does once you click on it. So if you click on "view bill history," that'll take you to the legislature's website and bring up kind of the main page for every bill that's out there. I guess the key things to kind of keep an eye on, the important actions are up top. And I'll, next slide I'll show, it'll show every step of the way that a particular bill's taken. But I think this one kind of gives you the main information you need to know. So obviously, on the links, you've got links to the actual bill. Bill hearing materials is going to be anyone who's testified on a bill. So if you want to see what certain people are saying about it, you can click on that and check. And then the Ethics Commission information will show you who's lobbying for and against it. And then at the bottom, so when bills are introduced in the legislature, there's an assembly bill. There's typically an assembly bill and a Senate companion. They move on separate tracks, but you can see the action that's done on the companion bill as well, on the C also. And then underneath this, this is what I was talking about, it kind of shows the action as you go through the entire bill. As I mentioned, you can also sign up for committee hearings, or committee notices. If you look up top there, those are all the different notification services you can sign up for. So you can do committees, and if we click on the Assembly Education Committee here, it'll show you all the bills that are in committee, who all the members are. You can click on each of those profiles and email them if you need to. Come on. There you go. And then, as I mentioned, there's some other tracking features. You can do specific bill proposals. Administrative rules, this is something that's often overlooked, and as my colleague Lucas was just up here, he's very interested in administrative rules. A lot of policy can be made by state agencies with very little oversight from the legislature. There are opportunities to opine on those proposals. We have another citizen's guide that kind of walks through all those opportunities. And if you ever want any more information on that, we'd be happy to talk with you about that.